Call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 21st, 2025. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Platsner?
Commissioner Knoblock?
Here.
Commissioner No?
Here.
Commissioner Tremel?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Schmalky?
Here.
Commissioner Roniak?
Here.
Chair Schwartz?
Here.
Thank you. All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Schmalky, second by Knoblock. Any additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda's adopted. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of our July 17th, 2025 meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmalky. Any corrections or additions? Hearing nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the minutes are approved. All right, next, we have Planning Commission case 25-8, planned unit development for Costco wholesale at 12547 Riverdale Boulevard and 12519 Riverdale Boulevard. Mr. Platsner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners. So I have before you tonight a request for a planned unit development for the existing Costco at Main Street and Riverdale Boulevard, also fronting Northdale Boulevard. What they're proposing to do is to purchase the property that's currently occupied by the TGI Fridays, which is not open, combine it with their property, and demolish the TGI Fridays, and use that site and the parking for that site for a new 20 pump station, gas pump area for the Costco. So what Costco would be proposing would be to move their existing gas pumps from the northeast part of the site to the southwest part of the site, and double the number of pumps on the site. And they would be using the TGI Fridays property to do that. The reason why a PUD would be required in this case is because in the regional shopping district as it currently stands, a gas station is not a permitted use. This was not the case back in the year 2000 when Costco's gas station was originally permitted or originally approved. However, it became a not permitted use in the interim years. So currently, the gas station is legal nonconforming on the site. And staff recommended that the applicant apply for a PUD with the thinking that the best way to approach this, rather than have them request a zoning change or something that would affect the entire regional shopping site, would be to have them rezone their site to allow for a gas station as a permitted use rather than a legal nonconforming use, and that would then allow them to expand the gas station if approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. So that's why this is a PUD request and not just a site plan request. So what the applicant would be proposing to do would be to remove the gas pumps from the northeast side of the site and add 128 new parking spaces to that side of the site. So the northeast part of the site, fronting Northdale Boulevard, would go from being a gas station and parking spaces to only parking spaces. And then they would remove the TGI Fridays and their parking from the southwest side of the site and add their fuel station to that part of the site. They would also be proposing to modify the pseudo-traffic circle right at their entrance on Riverdale Boulevard, so in kind of the southwest, the southwest entrance to the site, and turn that into a, an intersection which allows a U-turn for northbound traffic to turn south, to become southbound traffic on Riverdale Boulevard. And this is anticipating that more vehicles would be leaving the site from the southwestern exit, and because left turns out of that exit on Riverdale Boulevard are not allowed, they would then be turning northbound and need to make a U-turn to get back onto Main Street. And I'll get a little bit more into the detail of that. But that's kind of the broad overview of the project that's being proposed. The goal for Costco is to allow for more customers to get gas on the site without increasing traffic congestion. And based on the traffic study that the applicant provided, they are, they believe, and the traffic study supports the belief that the increase in number of pumps would actually reduce traffic congestion on site. Staff understand that increasing the number of pumps on a gas station site may induce demand or will induce demand to a certain extent, but the idea is that the increased number of pumps will also allow users to get through the, the gas station queue quicker, get gas quicker, and thus have more throughput with less traffic congestion. The proposal would also move gas station-oriented traffic to the Riverdale Boulevard entrance to the site, which does have a little bit easier traffic movement compared to the Northdale Boulevard entrance. The two main reasons for this are, one, Northdale Boulevard allows left turns in and out of the entrance, so there are these conflicting left turns where northbound traffic on Northdale is turning across traffic to get into the site, and then traffic leaving the site intending to go northbound on Northdale are turning left across traffic. This would allow right-ins only on Riverdale Boulevard, and thus eliminate any direct left-turn conflicts from the site. The applicant also proposes to add additional screening to the southwestern part of the site to screen the gas pumps as much as possible from Main Street and from Riverdale Boulevard. So a little bit zoomed in here on the slideshow, you can see on the top right where the gas station is currently, that would become parking, and then on the bottom left where the TGI Fridays is currently, that would become the new gas pump area. What they're showing here are 20 different pump stations, so that's 40 different fuel hoses, so one on each side of the 20 different stations. And they would have a traffic light system that shows anyone waiting in the queue for these pumps, which pumps are open, so you don't have a situation where someone in the back is blocking the view of the pumps in front of them and making it unable for someone waiting in the queue to see that those pumps in front of them are available. They'll be able to see from the queue exactly which pumps are available and be able to move their car accordingly. And I, this has apparently been shown in other Costco sites with a large number of fuel pumps to be effective. And this is the parking lot. So really, the main addition in terms of landscaping is this southwestern corner, the south along Main Street and the west along Riverdale Boulevard adjacent to the gas pumps. And what they'd be showing, so it's a little bit misleading here because the top view is in the spring before the trees are leafed out, and the bottom view is showing summer, but they would be adding some evergreen trees and some additional deciduous trees along Main Street to better screen the gas pumps from Main Street. And unlike the TGI Fridays, they would not have, you know, a direct front entrance on Main Street. It would be a fuel station that would be accessed from the west. So in full bloom, these trees would be screening the fuel pumps more than the existing trees are screening the TGI Fridays. And going back, they would also be removing the green parapet from on top of the fuel pump canopy. So aesthetically, that's the primary change, otherwise the fuel canopy would look similar to the existing Costco fuel canopy. So the traffic study that the applicant provided shows, I have three different images of vehicles using the gas pumps and queuing for the gas pumps. So this is existing, north is on the left here, so this is turned 90 degrees, but this is the existing fuel pump. So on the top would be Northdale Boulevard, and then folks would be turning in from the top, which is the east, to get into this, the queue for these fuel pumps. So there are 10 fuel pumps right now with hoses on each side, so 20 possible spots for, for getting gas. And this is showing the maximum observed Saturday, midday, peak hour vehicle queue. So what they're seeing is at maximum, you'd have 23 vehicles queuing while 20 vehicles are in fueling positions. The new gas station, at the same time, what they're projecting would be at maximum, 40 vehicles in fueling positions, 15 queuing vehicles. What's being shown here is, of course, probably more orderly than what it actually looks like on the ground, but this is based on Costco's observations on similar gas stations elsewhere in the country. Generally, the number of cars would be queuing at peak hours. And what the, the traffic study claims is that the expansion would reduce peak queues and reduce wait times rather than increasing those due to induced demand. And then at very peak demand, so I'm thinking probably Thursday and Friday evenings in the summer for cabin-bound, northbound traffic, maybe a few times a year, would be probably, well, let me, let me rephrase that. What's being shown here is the maximum number of cars queuing that are supported by the, by the site. The applicant does not think that this would ever occur, even at very maximum times, cabin, weekend, northbound travel, evenings. So what's being shown here is the maximum number of vehicles that could be supported without creating backup issues. And so this would be up to 84 vehicles with, I think it's 44 queuing vehicles and 40 vehicles in fueling positions. So moving on to the changes to Riverdale Boulevard, so Riverdale Boulevard is a private street, so it's generally owned, I think the entirety of it is owned by the Riverdale Shopping Center. So they are proposing adding a right-turn lane northbound on Riverdale Boulevard, so coming from Main Street, there'd be a right-turn lane, which would add an extra lane for vehicles turning into Costco and turning into the fuel pumps, keeping the left two lanes free for northbound traffic. And then with the pseudo-roundabout that we have right now, which is really just a bulge in the road, there's no intersection or turning movements currently allowed, a U-turn turning movement would be allowed for northbound traffic to turn southbound. So there would be a third lane in the left, would be a turn lane only, and it would allow for a left turn. It wouldn't function as a roundabout, meaning north, or southbound traffic on Riverdale Boulevard would not need to yield to U-turning traffic. The U-turning traffic would need to, they would have a yield sign, and they would need to wait for southbound traffic on Riverdale Boulevard to clear before they could make that turn. And then they're showing truck turnarounds using this roundabout, or pseudo-roundabout system, which would allow trucks and the fire trucks to make that turn without crossing into the westernmost southbound lane, so they would be able to stay in one lane, southbound, which for a standard U-turn is not possible. Trucks need to use generally all four lanes, they need to make that left turn from the northbound right lane and then all the way into the southbound opposite lane in order to make that turn. So this eases the turning situation for trucks. So that's all I have in terms of our presentation. I do have the recommendation here, which is that staff do recommend, that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed PUD, with the primary condition being that the applicant combine the two sites, the TGI Friday site and the Costco site, before any building permits would be able to be approved. Otherwise, the conditions are standard conditions for any site plan. So that's all I have in terms of our presentation. I know the applicant also has slides that they'd like to show if it pleased the chair. They're just part of my slideshow, so if the chair decides to have the applicant up to deliver their presentation, it'll just be on the same slideshow. Thank you.
Thank you. Right now, let's forego any questions for Mr. Platsner and have the petitioners make their presentation. Good evening.
Chair, Plan Commission, my name is Larry Jurcek. I'm a Costco real estate manager, working out of the Midwest office. Our office is 1955 Raymond Drive in Northbrook. We're about 30 miles north of Chicago. By the way, Max did a great presentation. He covered a lot of topics. He basically gave a good overview of what our proposal is for tonight. One thing that he hasn't touched on is safety. And my main focus and a lot of Costco's real estate managers are looking at properties throughout the Midwest, and I'm primarily focused on projects in the Midwest, and it's safety. It's, it's looking at existing, couple decades old, like we have here in Coon Rapids, warehouses with older gas facilities. We know Costco's business is doing quite well, sales transactions are up, memberships have been increasing, gas sales have increased, but we're going back and taking a look at how do these plans work? How does traffic work? How do the members interact with the perimeter and thoroughfares around the properties? And what we noticed here was a lot of congestion off of Northdale. Northdale, as you come in, there's a lot of confusion, you have the gas queue that basically blends in with that drive aisle, with the east-west drive aisle. And I spent a couple hours today, as a matter of fact, driving around, and I got gas, I went through it, and I noticed people come in and they stop. They're not really sure what to do. Should I get gas? If you're not sure if you're getting gas, you may stop and not really sure where you're going. What we like about this plan is that we're picking up the gas and we're relocating it, and it's on the same property, as Max indicated, that we'll, we'll combine the TGI Friday property with our property, but we're separating now parking from gas, and that's really how this plan works. We have a, a area on the property that will be strictly for gas, it works quite well, and it's separate from parking. So now, we've cleaned up Northdale, and with our improvements on Riverdale, with the right-turn lane and with the modification of the U-turn, I think we have a really stunning plan, and we're really excited to get started on this, and we're, if approvals go well, we're looking at construction in the spring of next year. As Max said, we had a presentation tonight. I, really, there's not much more that I would like to add to it. I could go back to the first slide, and it's the overall slide. Let's see. Max, maybe what I could look at is the landscaping along Main Street. So we are increasing the landscaping. I know there was some concern about the buffering and the screening of the canopy. Costco has no problem screening or buffering the canopy. When you're a member, you know where the gas is. You'll find, you'll find it. If you don't know where the gas is, all you have to do is drive around the parking lot. So screening and buffering for the benefit of the community, we have no problem doing that. And the renderings that Max presented, that we prepared, these are after about three to five years of growth. I would have to say closer to five to seven, if, if I were to be more exact. So, and there's a mixture, there's a mixture of canopy and evergreen trees as well. And one thing that wasn't mentioned is that there's a small screen wall that's in front of the loading dock area. We're going to extend that screen wall in front of our gas as well. I think it shows up on our plan here. Yes, it's kind of a sawtooth screen wall, so we're going to extend, it's about 36 inches in height, so our, our goal there is just to cut down on the headlights that night. And it's going to basically buffer the, you know, probably two-thirds of the car at that distance from, from Main Street. So I think our landscape plan looks great. We use a landscape architect based out of the Chicagoland area that does all our landscape plans for the Midwest, and she really has come up with a great, great plant palette here. And then in terms of that right-turn lane, we will have to remove some trees in the parkway, but we'll replant them just to the east, and we're going to relocate the sidewalk to the east as well. And I think there's a couple streetlights that we're working with the, with the developer on, and the developer happens to be the seller as well. So we are under contract with the seller for the TGI Friday property. I think I covered everything I wanted to cover. I think Max did a great job again with, with his presentation. With me tonight, I do have our civil engineer, Tom Meyer with Landform, is our local civil engineer, and Adam Bergdoff is our national traffic consultant. He handles all our traffic throughout North America, basically, and he and I worked really hard with, with staff, with Kurt, for several months now on the design of Riverdale. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commission?
I have some questions, if one is ready.
Max, should we do the public hearing before we do any questioning of any kind?
Commissioner Schwartz, that's up to you. I think you can do the public hearing now if you'd like.
All right. I will, at this time, reopen the public hearing on planning case 25-8, the planned unit development for Costco wholesale, 12547 Riverdale Boulevard and 12519 Riverdale Boulevard. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And now, commission questions? We'll start with Commissioner Roniak.
Okay. First of all, it looks like you're stacking from the west to the east.
Yes, the entrance is on the west side, correct. Yes.
And even though you're adding more pumps, most of your pumps are from the east to the west, not vertically north-south.
Correct.
So my experience with Costco is the people are still going to stack, and they have a, not, they don't have a tendency to pull ahead and pull into the vacant spot that's somewhere in pump number two, number three, number four, which is vacated. They like to wait until they're all vacated.
Right.
And they drive in. So adding more pumps east to west isn't going to increase it greatly unless you added pumps north to south, which means you'd have less depth, more width. That's one of my observations here. The other thing is now, you're going to be coming in, people are going to be coming in from the north, the east, and they're going to have to come down the pathway between the parking lots. They're not going to be able to come down on Riverdale.
From the north.
Because there's not a left turn.
Right, from the north, yeah.
On Riverdale. So they're going to have to enter from that spot where you have the entrance from Riverdale. They're coming down from the north, and then if you're coming from the east, you're probably going to have to come in the same way, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's, the other question I have, and I didn't see in here, is the environmental study on your existing station when you vacate it. Now, you've been producing petrol chemicals there for 24 years.
Right, right.
Now, Max, are we, are they going to be doing environmental study for the ground, see if there's any pollution before they cover it up or develop it?
Commissioner Roniak, the standards for fuel station demolition and fuel tank removal will need to be met by the applicant, but that is not something that we would generally look over at a planning commission meeting. That's something that the fire department and the engineering department look at usually at the time of building permit approval, and I, I know that they will be required to meet this, whatever standards we do have for fuel tank removal.
Because you realize there's going to be a group of people that are going to be inquiring about that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, no, I appreciate your questions. That is our decommissioning process, and we use a separate consultant, Barghausen Associates out of Seattle, and we're well aware of the state statutes and legal and local requirements. When we dig those tanks up, we'll test the soil before we backfill. It's, it's, it's a very elaborate process, and it takes quite some time. It's not simply just popping those tanks out and, and backfilling, and away we go and build the parking lot. So everything's inspected. The decommission could take 30, possibly 45 days of work to get that gas station down and approved by the state. So those are, and we'll work with, with the city as well on all those local requirements. So I have no concerns about that, and we have interfaced with local environmental groups, too, because that's always a concern about something that's been in the ground for 20 years. But in terms of, one thing I didn't touch on with, with our gas station is that this will be our new standard. This, Costco has a gasoline operation group, and for the last 20 years, they have been studying, and their main responsibility at Costco is to deal primarily on gas. And so what we don't have at the current gas station is enough spacing between the pumps. So we're actually increasing the spacing between the pumps, so when you're parked in pump one, you could still get around pump one and get to pump two, or pump three, or pump four, in that east-west direction. And not only that, but we've increased the lane width from, I think we're at nine feet, and we're going to be at 10 feet, our bypass lanes are, I think, 10 feet, they're going to 11 feet nine inches or 11 feet six inches. So it's gotten a little bit larger, and it's, and it's due to safety and just maneuverability to be able to move around a parked car.
That's one of the areas that I notice in Costco, there is a definite problem with.
Yes, with our older stations, that's true, but we're hoping, we're, we're slowly progressing warehouse-to-warehouse across the country and, and doing these improvements, and they're much needed. And this, this will be a much more efficient, cutting-edge fuel station.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schmalky?
So this is, this is really impressive. I do like it a lot. I appreciate the attention that's been given to the, you know, the right-ins, the right-outs, things like that. I am curious, looking at this particular image here, it's like, how much, were there, how many options did you consider for the configuration incorporating that roundabout? I, I asked the question because I like this, but my concern is that, is that it is a short distance to have to cross over and then make that U-turn. So I'm, I'm a little concerned with the amount of, the amount of traffic that will elect to go out that, that way to be able to maneuver over, and I was wondering if there was any consideration given to maybe entering the roundabout more centrally to get directly into a roundabout, like you would see at a traditional roundabout.
Right, right.
Where people are coming in from the four sections. I'm, I'm just concerned about that. I know that that roundabout, the, the lanes themselves, it does feel like it's a little narrow today. I see people crossing the line every time they, they come, they approach the roundabout, it's kind of like they slow down. And if you have an opportunity to kind of go and observe it yourself, since you said you've been kind of doing that.
Yes.
They kind of slow down, they, they maybe follow the lane that they're in, or they cross over to the, you know, to the adjacent lane to then continue forward, and so that type of maneuvering and so forth, it concerns me that we're then adding higher volume now merging in there as well. So I wondered if any thought had been given to moving it to the middle. I'm sure that affects parking, things like that, but I just want to make sure that we're not creating, you know, a problem. I'll let you guys address that, and I do want to talk about the other Northdale entrance and exit as well.
Okay, yeah, why don't we address the?
Sure.
And we, it's, it's, I know you called it a roundabout, but it's.
Yes.
Really, I think technically we've been calling it a U-turn or a certain.
Correct, correct.
Right, but I'm going to have Adam answer a couple of your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioner. Adam Bergdoff, Kittleson &amp; Associates, 143 North Woodland Boulevard, Dillon, Florida, second floor. So, yes, the, so this, this circular feature that is within the roadway is, is, you know, while it's round, it's, it's generally not very conducive to becoming a roundabout. And the reason for that is that the, the north and south legs come in very straight. It wasn't designed to be a roundabout. And I believe it was SRF that did a, a study for the city a few years ago where they kind of examined that, and that's actually where this, this concept came forward, where they looked at, you know, putting in those type of U-turn lanes, or they actually evaluated two and only recommended the northern one, which is consistent with the plan that we're providing here. If we were to tie in to the, the eastern side of that, you know, bulge within the roadway, that would effectively cause it to become a roundabout, and it would not be of sufficient design to manage speeds effectively, and also, so we would have some operational issues at that, at that intersection, should that be there. And as you've mentioned, there would also be a parking impact as well. And so we, we did look at that, tried to see, could that potentially be, if that was to be converted into a roundabout, what would be the scope of the, of getting that done? And that's a massive construction project, essentially from the signal up to the hallway stop control, that have a lot of roadway realignment and also significant parking impacts on both sides of the roadway to the entire property. Now, we also understand that the existing right-in, right-out driveway, which is proposed to be maintained in its, its current location, is relatively close to, you know, that, that bulge within the roadway, and, and there was a concern, staff shared this, we, we, we received that, and, and so we ultimately ended up simulating this, this configuration using VSIM microsimulation software. Our typical softwares don't really allow us to, you know, you know, visualize how, how vehicles will make that maneuver, but this, this software that we utilized does do that. And so we ran that simulation, we. We do have a video that we could share if, if needed today that just kind of shows a snapshot of that. But upon examination of that video, we believe that the proximity to the signal to the south and also the hallway stop intersection to the north, there are gaps that, that are created that allow for this movement, maneuver to be made without additional conflict. That's also one of the reasons that we proposed an additional northbound right turn lane in there. We wanted to separate out right turning traffic into the Costco development so that there's not confusion from an exiting vehicle knowing who's going through and who's turning right. You know, if somebody forgets to put on a turn signal or leaves their turn signal on, they're, they're now going to be physically separated in a different lane. So, that reduces the amount of time that they need to make that decision to be able to turn out and they'll know that they have a gap. And we believe that that right turn lane is going to actually increase their gap acceptance. And the simulation did show that the outbound queuing actually reduces when we put in that northbound right turn lane. So, we have looked at this in, in great detail and we believe and we have seen through observations of the simulation software, which, that was during a Saturday, peak condition, you know, we've got the remaining of the, the shopping center operating kind of in its peak and then also Costco operating in one of its higher peak, you know, traffic conditions. So, I believe we've done a fairly conservative analysis to, to address that and there was not, within the simulation that was based upon 10 different runs, we didn't see any of these, of these issues. And I believe, again, it's because of that traffic signal down to the south, it has phases and it creates gaps in that traffic for, to allow for outbound traffic to flow well.
Got it. So, I think the right, the, the right in is great. So, I assume you're going to be widening the road then in order to create that?
That's correct.
Right turn in. I'm still just trying to imagine though, pulling out, if there's, if now I'm looking at people, are, do they have their signal on to come into that right turn lane? I have a middle lane to be concerned about and then the far lane, right? And I'm watching this, watching the staggering traffic and I know I need to get all the way over to that third lane in order to make my U-turn. It does still seem to me like that is an awfully short distance for people to be making that run and trying to get into that, to that U-turn lane. So, I, I don't know, in terms of traffic studies, I know you, you mentioned, Max, that that's all still being, you know, looked at and so forth. I just want to make sure that that is effectively addressed, make sure that it's like from the volume of traffic then now with three lanes, that, you know, that confusion coming out of there, I, I don't know that it's, it's sufficient. It's, I appreciate the, you know, the, the AI, I guess simulations and so forth. I think that's great. I'm trying to just still imagine it myself though, if I'm, especially around the holidays with how busy that area is. That's probably one, and I know it's, it's only a couple months out of the year, but it's still, you know, significant and certainly Saturdays are very busy in that area all throughout the year. I can see from this image, you know, that it's like they're kind of, they are forced to go right into that lane, so there isn't, yeah, there isn't like a, a separate lane that they can move into and merge over. I don't know how helpful that would be, but I don't think that would solve the problem at all. And I'm not trying to solve for it. I'm just trying to call to the fact that I still not, I'm not very comfortable with that positioning of the exit relative to that U-turn. I do think it will be happily used and I just don't know, yeah. And, and you brought up an excellent point about the traffic then coming from the north side of the parking lot. That's also going to add, you know, more exit. That other exit down further north is, is pretty heavy as it is. I can see a lot of people coming to this exit thinking that it might be quicker to get out. So, I think beyond the gas station traffic, you're going to see an influx of more people coming to this exit as well. So, please look at this intersection more. I don't know what the right answer is. I'm not, I'm not that, that background, but this still certainly seems to me like it could be problematic, okay? My other question is on the, the other intersection though, could we do an image of that really quick? Yeah, yep, you had it right there.
Here we go.
Okay. So, I can see how, you know, so we, we still have the, the left end, which is great, okay? People can immediately take a right to go into the parking spots there or continue forward. I see how the, you know, the islands can help to separate and so forth. I can tell you again firsthand though, that, that very first right turn in, that people can also use then to make a left to get into the turn lane, to make a right turn out of the parking lot, that is also problematic, okay? And so, I don't see where this is going to be an improvement. I'd almost rather see that if that island from Northdale Boulevard where you have all the, the low landscaping over to the first island, it almost needs to be blocked all the way across, okay? And make sure that people aren't coming down that very first. You need to give people more time. That is a very short distance for the traffic then coming through that are already queued up to go make that right turn out. People trying to cross then to get into that queue to make that right turn out is a problem as it is, especially because you have traffic coming in plus you're trying to get into that queue, that's a challenge. So, if there is a better way of guiding the traffic there or, you know, so that is very smooth, you know, in and out there, that's critically important. So, those are my two observations.
Yes, and may I speak to, to that one?
Absolutely.
Because I would like to highlight an improvement. So, we, we're sensitive to that and we experience that when we are driving around the site as well. And part of that reason that, that is happening today is that the gas currently discharges north and when folks want to get back to Northdale, that's the, that's the intersection that they have to use to continue on. And so, what we've proposed is a, a new right-in, right-out driveway such that anybody sort of, you know, parked in this northern area has a more easy way to get out and they can be out in the roadway. And we believe that this, this left turn and immediate right turn volume will, will decrease significantly because they now have another option up here.
And that's really good. I, you know what, I did not even see that when I was looking at it originally, I was so focused on the other area. So, that is a, a good improvement. I think that will help to take some of that, making a left to get into the queue, that might deter that a little bit and they might opt to go out the other way instead. Okay, thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Yeah, once they know about that, I didn't realize that either, that that could be a separate right-in, right-out. That would alleviate a lot of that Northdale, you know, swirl there that you have to go to one side of the island and, and whatnot. So, that's a, I'm glad to see that. Once people know it's there and, and it, you know, when Mary was talking about that bulge in the road, it does, it goes without saying and yet it needs to be said if, if people use their blinkers, it would go a lot smoother, of course. You know, so you have a little lead time there. It is kind of a short, short lead time and I don't, I don't use it in high-traffic times, so I'm not as concerned. I, you know, I can afford to, or I can stagger my trips to Costco to less-traffic times. So, I, I understand your concern about that. And I had one other concern about all the exits from these new gas pumps will go to the north, I mean, they'll come out of their pump stall. And I have to say, the red and green X's you have on the current, I, I use those all the time. Those are valuable to let you know what's open, what isn't. So, if that's incorporated into this new design, that's great.
It is.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, all this traffic comes out of the gas stalls and takes a left and exits through this north, you have a little white area across it, but, and then we'll all take that left or, or possibly go into the parking of, of the main store.
That's right, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that is the only way. And then you're saying this screening that you described, this 36-inch wall, that will be in front of people as they exit?
Uh, in front.
Well, as they come out of the gas pumps, it's going.
We do have a, a narrow island on the east side.
Okay.
That's planted, but those are lower shrubs, lower shrubs and perennials. The higher material is along Main Street, definitely along Main Street.
Okay, the, that extends from your loading docks.
Right.
That screen, okay, that's all along Main Street.
That's right, yeah. And we're extending the wall, that masonry wall, it's about 36 inches.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll extend that wall and we're planting in front of it and behind it.
Okay. I'll take a better look at this site now that, next time I go, there's lots more to see.
Sure.
But I too was very impressed with the landscaping that you're going to incorporate. It'll just mask the, the automotive end of it, I guess, although we all use that automotive end. But it's, it's impressive that, like you say, five years, it will be very noticeable. So.
Absolutely, thank you.
That's, that's my comment, yeah.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
I just have two quick points to make for the applicant. Do you, does Costco, with all the numerous locations, with the current layout and situation, to your knowledge, do you have any other similar sites in comparison to the situation being presented today?
In our proposed condition, do we have something similar?
Yes.
Yeah.
Throughout the nation that, that you've encountered the same situation.
Well, let's see, Adam, can you think of any?
Yeah, it's in Arizona, what's the name of the city?
Buckeye.
Buckeye.
Well, well, yeah, Buckeye, Arizona, we have a 20, or a 40 dispenser station that works very similar, but we have two under construction right now outside of Detroit in Commerce Township. And, and we have a four-by-four, so we have, we have a 16 pump that's up and running in Shelby, Michigan as well. So, this is a newer model and we're building these now in the Midwest. And the one that we have in Arizona is, is a great model that we could take a look at to see how, with, with the, you know, the 40 dispensers, how cars actually move through it. But it's, it's all been very positive.
It's great to hear. The reason I ask is just so that it's, it, this is more confidence building, that it's not a, a new proposal or a new concept. And then the second question I have is, as you mentioned just with Commissioner Casey, about the dividing wall, the screen that provides along Main Street.
Right.
And that's a wonderful idea. And then the, providing the, the expansion and the canopy and the different types of foliage to provide some cover there, that will develop in the next few years. My question is, along the Main Street side, I believe that is the loading and the stocking part. My only question is, is how is this gas station development on the TGI Friday site, is that going to in any way affect the flow and the supply of, of the trucks to?
No.
No?
No, no, not at all, no. Two separate components? Absolutely, there's, there's, if you look at the plan where the loading docks are, there, we have not decreased the distance whatsoever from what it's today.
Excellent.
It's exactly the same way it's designed today. So, we're, we're basically building the gas on TGI Friday's parcel. It's about two and a half acres.
Okay. And, and just, that's wonderful, I just, and the last thing is, the consideration which you've put a lot of emphasis on is the Northdale and where the current gas is. That turning into the gas stations at the current setup has always concerned me. And so, any development away from that current situation, I think is only going to be more safer, more satisfaction for customers, because I find that to be an extremely necessary but a very scary.
Yes.
Situation. So, thank you for this.
Commissioner, we would agree, completely agree with that statement.
Thank you.
All right, I have a couple of questions. Do you have a, can you give us an estimate of what the distance is from that driveway on Riverdale to, to the U-turn?
So, our, so our entrance and exit on Costco's to the U-turn? What the distance is? Adam, do we have that distance?
I don't have a scale planned. It's 15 to 60 feet. 75. 50 to 75.
Probably around 75 feet. Chair.
Because your scale there at the bottom shows was a 40, 40 feet for an inch?
Are you?
In our, our paper drawings.
Oh, on the drawing? I think we're looking at one of Tom's drawings. Tom, do you have?
I have like 90 feet or 30 to 35 meters.
It certainly isn't an inch, it must be 40 feet for a half inch maybe?
Or are we measuring to the entrance of the U-turn?
Yes, sir.
Right, from, okay, from top, so. Give us a minute, we're actually looking on our, on our computer here, we'll give you an exact.
Probably 40 feet.
40 feet?
Yep. That's to the beginning of the taper, correct? To the, yes, yeah.
Oh, so that's to the taper, not to the actual turn? Well, Tom, what would it be to the turn?
To the full lane width, it's 75 feet.
Okay.
And then there's an exclusive lane and then it wraps around on the north side of the circle.
Right.
All right. And then onto a different topic, do you have any images or information on the attendance facility, the building?
The kiosk, we call it the Costco gas kiosk. I believe in our initial submittal, we had the elevations drawn, we should have had the kiosk drawn as well. That should have been in your packet. Max, do you recall if that was in the packet?
It, it should be in the packet. I believe the elevations were included as part of the packet.
Yes.
Let me see if, wait, I'll try and find them and see.
We'd like to match exactly what's out there today in terms of what it looks like. I mean, that's absolutely necessary to have that, that structure. That's where our electrical gets tied into.
Is there any room to place a restroom somewhere out there?
So, that's a very good question. When we've looked at these fuel relocations, our general rule of thumb is over 700 feet or so. We've been looking at a restroom to the front of the store if we're greater than that. I, I believe we're under that 700-foot distance, so we, we really did not consider a restroom in this case. We just didn't think it was necessary for the gas attendant. I mean, most of these are just for our gas attendants, not a public restroom. I don't believe out of the 700 Costcos throughout the country, we have a, a outdoor restroom open to the public. It would only be for our gas attendant or employees, but, yes.
Because I, I was thinking more along the lines of a public restroom. And then where, where is your delivery service? Where's the refill truck park and, and fill the tanks?
That's on the, on the far north side. So, you see there's a striped area, so the trucks come in off of Riverdale and swing around and they will drop, they'll fill up the tanks, and then they will go around the building. So, they will make the maneuver around the building. That's, that's the, the travel pattern. So they will make the maneuver around the building, that's that's the the travel pattern that we've worked out with the warehouse and with Costco gas operations. So it's a very easy drop, it's on the north side, won't interfere with any traffic going in the east-west or north-south directions.
It's totally away from the from the cars.
That's correct.
Vehicles filling gas.
That's correct, that's why we like the orientation of this, somebody asked me about how many different concepts have we looked at, we've looked at turning this north-south, east-west, and this is the best location orientation-wise, to make sure that fuel truck gets in and out.
And then, at least for now, my final question, I know that it's not available or at any of your current stores that that I've been to, have you had any thoughts or ideas on posting a sign with price? Your competitor Sam's Club down University Avenue, for example, they they have a sign that shows the price. Does Costco have any objections to putting a sign?
Well, in terms of objection, I just know historically speaking, we don't advertise price for gas because it, well, it fluctuates so much, and of course, you could say, why not put a digital billboard up, and it would fluctuate with the market or whatever the gas price is. I, there is not one facility in the country with with any sort of pricing, we just, I I don't believe that we would do something like that, I could I could ask, but I I don't believe we would actually entertain putting up a sign. If you've noticed, Costco doesn't advertise, we don't, the only signage we have is on the building, and we have a small Costco wholesale on the fuel facility, which by the way, has changed, it used to say Costco gasoline, and now it just basically says Costco wholesale. But there's no monument signs, were never added to the overall shopping center signage. It's it's very discreet, and it it makes sense, right, it's a membership-based business, so we just don't advertise with with signage, and I I don't believe we would put up a sign with with pricing, price.
Well, like I say, your, yeah, I guess I can call him your competitor, Sam's Club has a digital sign up on the top of the canopy?
Yes, no, I'm well aware, I'm well aware of it, and yeah, it's something, that would have to be approved by the CEO if that were to happen.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
I I guess I'd just like to comment, I'm, you know, if they were to consider something that, I I'm afraid that would take away from some of the landscaping that they're proposing, so then that would actually expose it more, I'd rather have the landscaping than a sign.
I don't I don't see how an electronic sign on the up on the side of the canopy affects landscaping whatsoever.
I see, I was I was assuming you want to see it from the road.
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you would see it from Riverdale as you drove by. But, all right.
I got a question.
Mr. Roniak.
What's the distance from the landscaping to the front of the pump where you're stacking?
So we kept the same distance as the current building, the TGI Friday building, and I think we're actually increasing that a little bit more, it's a very generous setback, I think we're, do we have, Tom, do we have a dimension to the back of curb from the property line?
Or how many cars can you stack is the other question.
How many cars can we stack in?
About twenty foot, twenty feet a car, if you walk from the pumps back to the west, that distance there determines how many cars you can stack in there.
Let's take a look at a plan, let's see. This one here?
So these vehicles are drawn in on this graphic, they're they're drawn in at twenty-five feet, assume twenty-five feet per vehicle, and so we have one, two, three, four, and change, vehicles kind of nose to nose behind each.
Four vehicles out, and then space behind them to get alongside.
That's correct, that's correct, yep.
Thank you. And if this doesn't work, Max can be geographic over there.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I had one more thought when they brought up the the filling, the gas, you know, refill tanks on the on the north side, and then does that mean that the trucks will, you don't have the graphic up here anymore, but it would go continue on and go around the building toward the front of Costco, is that?
No, no, it would go around the backside and to the far east side, and then exit on Northdale.
Oh.
You can't get around the front of Costco.
Around them, so.
Yeah, we try to avoid any sort of truck traffic in front of the building.
Yeah, those would be big, big rigs.
Yes, we.
They would just continue along where the the loading docks are, so to speak.
That's right, that's right.
And come around that way.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner, any other thoughts, questions, concerns? Motions?
Oh, are we going to do, are we going to do a, I guess I thought we were, we would still have the just the commission discussion?
Oh, sure, all right.
So this, I'm I'm assuming this was the part where we just have the questions for the petitioner?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, any additional thoughts, concerns, questions?
Chairman.
Mr.
I do like the, I do like the idea of taking the pressure off of Northdale Boulevard, especially when the cars are stacked up, almost crossing Main Street, so, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Chair Schwartz.
Mr. Noel.
I like the idea of making some good use out of where the current TGI Friday's building is. I'm really pleased that you're having more distance between the pumps and the ways between them, because I know it's always been an issue that I've seen. I share the concerns of Commissioner Schmokey about that, as I drove the other day, that quick egress into that U-turn. Hopefully those stop signs and stoplights can make that effective, but I I do appreciate the new ingress egress on the Northdale side, although I think that's going to change things up, and that bottlenecked so much. That being said, I would recommend in Planning Case 25-8 that we approve the proposed planning unit development with the conditions listed in our packet.
Second.
Motion by Noel, second by Knoblauch, any further discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor? Aye. opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, this is a recommendation by the Planning Commission, we had a six to one vote with Commissioner Schmokey opposed. It's a recommendation by the Planning Commission with a decision by the City Council at their September second meeting. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next case is Planning Case 25-9, an ordinance amendment to create an LDR three district, city code sections eleven dash six oh one and eleven dash six oh seven.
Sorry, there was a problem with the app.
Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So the second case I have before you tonight is a request for an ordinance to amend the residential section of the zoning code to add a new zoning district, the LDR three zoning district, so we did discuss this at the work session back in July. The City Council, we also had a work session, staff had a work session with the City Council on the proposed LDR three district, and the City Council was generally amenable to what was being proposed after the discussion with the Planning Commission. What's being proposed here is not substantially different than what was brought at the work session with the Planning Commission back in July, there are some changes that I will make sure to go over, but just to give a brief overview of the LDR three district again, as a refresher, so what this would be is a new zoning district within the low-density residential land use guidance, so three to five units per acre would still be the range of density for any new development within this district. The allowed uses would be single-family homes and accessory uses, as well as some institutional uses that are generally allowed in residential districts, such as churches and schools. The allowed uses would be almost exactly the same as what's currently allowed in the LDR two zoning district, the only major exception being twin homes, the LDR two district has a number of existing twin homes and duplexes, those are not very commonly built these days, and the city staff does not see any reason to begin allowing new twin homes again in single-family residential districts, so that is not an allowed use in the proposed LDR three district, otherwise it does match the LDR two district in terms of allowed uses. The new lot sizes that would be proposed for the LDR three district would be seventy-two-hundred square foot minimum lot area, a sixty-foot minimum lot width, and a hundred-twenty-foot minimum lot depth. And to be clear, a developer proposing any new homes within the LDR three district, LDR three district would be able to have larger lots, wider lots, deeper lots than the minimum allowed, this is only setting a denser maximum density and a smaller minimum lot size for these lots. Notably, you would never have a development where every lot is seventy-two-hundred square feet, sixty feet wide, and a hundred-twenty feet deep, and you also are very unlikely to have a maximum, the maximum density with those lot sizes due to the need for streets, stormwater ponding, odd-shaped lots, corner lots, et cetera, that are going to be larger than the minimum. So I do, a little bit later in this presentation, list some of the maximum densities that could be reached mathematically, in theory, these would never be reached in in reality due to these factors. So the other changes being proposed, as well as the lot sizes, are lot coverage, so staff recognize that it's difficult already to meet a thirty percent lot coverage when you're including buildings, including the home, accessory structures, and driveways in the LDR two district, with smaller lots, it would be even more difficult, so staff are proposing an increase in allowed lot coverage from thirty percent to fifty percent. This would allow for the forty-foot wide driveways, et cetera, that we currently allow in the LDR two district, in the LDR three district, and staff are also proposing reduced setback requirements also to allow more of a lot to be utilized for structures and driveways. Most of the thirty-five-foot front and rear setback requirements in the LDR two district would be twenty-five feet in the LDR three district, and many of the ten-foot side yard setbacks in the LDR two district would be seven and a half feet in the LDR three district, meaning that structures on different lots would be able to be fifteen feet from each other, rather than the twenty feet from each other that's currently allowed, and this is for living spaces in general, garages are currently allowed to be five foot feet setback from the side lot lines, meaning they'd be ten feet from each other in the LDR two district. Just getting a look at the type of density that is currently allowed by zoning code and comparing that to what our range is in the comprehensive plan, so three to five units an acre is the range that we allow developments to meet in low-density residential district of the comprehensive plan. The zoning standards for LDR one and LDR two do make it difficult in some cases to meet that range. The maximum mathematically possible in the LDR one district is actually below the minimum in in our comprehensive plan, so there are some discrepancies between our zoning and land use. In certain infill lots, especially constrained ones, lots with unique situations, like the the Fire Station Three redevelopment lot that's coming up, that I did mention at the work session, which does have, you know, a deep sewer pipe going through the lot, and it's an odd-shaped lot, it has a street going through it, things like that, meeting the three to five units per acre in the land use with the LDR one or LDR two district is is very difficult to do, so the LDR three district does have utility in that situation. I did go over this again at the work session, adjacent cities, Brooklyn Park and Andover both have similar districts that allow for smaller lot areas, but only allow single-family homes that would be corollary to, or would correlate to, the LDR three district that is being proposed. However, Coon Rapids currently has allowed, or in in the recent past has allowed, and other adjacent cities also have allowed, PUDs that are single-family residential only that have similar or even smaller lots than what would be allowed in the LDR three district, and I will go over a couple of those. So there are a couple existing PUDs, all of which were developed in the eighties in Coon Rapids, include Parkside Second Edition, Shannon Park, and Eager Estates, which have lot widths of sixty feet at minimum, and front setbacks of twenty-five or thirty feet, as well as rear setbacks of twenty-five or thirty feet, and then an image of Eager Estates for any who have not driven that part of town. This is what that those sixty-foot lot widths look like on the ground. More recent developments, Ramsey did have the North Fork Meadows development approved back in twenty-twenty, I want to say, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, many of these houses were built in twenty-twenty-one, and these are even smaller, with fifty-foot lot widths, a hundred-twenty-five foot lot depths, and twenty-five foot front setbacks, this is what that looks like on the ground. So the lots are a little bit smaller, the homes are a little bit larger compared to the lot size, and you have about, for these, about ten feet between the homes, whereas in the LDR three district, we're proposing fifteen feet between the homes. A couple of other differences from LDR two, which were added into the proposed LDR three district between the work session and now, one would be allowing living spaces directly over a garage to meet the garage setbacks, so the garage setback, side setback would be five feet instead of seven and a half feet, staff are proposing allowing living spaces directly above the garage to meet that in order to avoid the awkward two-and-a-half-foot step between the garage and the living space, and allow a building style that has, you know, rooms directly over the garage, which is very common right now. Removing the variable setback options, LDR two district had a lot of unique exceptions for front setbacks and things like that, that I think would be inappropriate in the LDR three district, we already having a twenty-five-foot front setback, there isn't much need for these kinds of unique front setbacks for entry rooms, foyers, ramps leading up to porches, things like that, these are usually pretty easy to meet with a twenty-five-foot front setback, a little bit more difficult to meet with a thirty-five-foot front setback, and then, as I mentioned earlier, two-family residential uses. So I do have a couple more slides that I can reach into if there are questions about some of the specifics about this, but in terms of the presentation I wanted to go over, this is all I have, so staff do recommend, that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed ordinance, so this would amend city code section eleven dash six oh one, which would add LDR three to the use table, and allow all of the same uses allowed in LDR two, except two-family homes, and create section eleven dash six oh seven, creating the LDR three zoning district, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Platsner. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Platsner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
Just one really quick, just to clarify, again, we're not making this change to make LDR three the standard now going forward, this is for those unique circumstances in order to be able to take advantage of existing properties, et cetera, that might not be able to work in LDR two, correct?
Commissioner Schmokey, that's correct, the focus is on smaller infill lots where five, six, seven, maybe twenty homes would potentially be able to be built, but not large developments or large tracts of land, and definitely not replacing LDR two as the standard.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Roniak.
Look, I can see why you're doing this, I'm not a fan of reducing lot sizes, I think it, you come to the suburbs to have space, and all we're doing is condensing it, we're putting the people tighter, potential conflicts. I don't feel that Two Rapids should be going into a more densely packed neighborhood, they're leaving the Twin Cities because of that, now, as a developer, I can see why they like this, they're going to get more houses, they're going to make more money, I'm just not a fan of reducing lot sizes, if they want to build a smaller house, fine, but I think people need more space between the houses, in fact, we ran into that issue over along the Mississippi, where we had that, the guy wanted to build a house. we ran into that issue over along the Mississippi, where we had the guy wanted to build a house and the lot, their house was right on the lot line. He wanted to expand. She was worried about people looking in their living room. So I'm just not a fan of reducing lot sizes, but I can see why you're doing it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
I guess then, a follow-up then for one of the quick clarification. Anything that would become an LDR-3 would still have to come through the Planning Commission, because it would be a rezone then or something from LDR-2 to an LDR-3, or is this something that staff would have the ability, so it does come by us, right? So we would have the opportunity to review it.
Commissioner Schmokey, if I may, yes, that's absolutely correct. Any rezoning would have to go through the Planning Commission, the council, as with any other ordinance amendment. Just full disclosure, the city is planning to bring forward a request for rezoning for the Fire Station 3 property
Correct.
To LDR-3, should the ordinance pass.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Chair Schwartz. Commissioner Knoblauch.
A question for Planner Platsner. So in your professional opinion, you're estimating 10 to 20 cases perhaps a year?
Commissioner Knoblauch, I, in looking at many of the infill lots in the city and seeing that there are lots of options for 10 to 20 homes in some of these lots, these that, I'm basically describing the size of a lot of these infill lots as ones that could support a number of homes somewhere between five and 20 in a lot of cases. Obviously, there are some larger lots that may go up for development in the future that might allow for significantly larger number of homes, or even some mixed uses, but I definitely do not predict that there will be 10 to 20 cases of development in infill lots per year. I think it would be much lower than that.
Okay. So we're looking at a very small percentage of anything that would be coming before the Planning Commission or the City Council?
Correct.
Okay, so you'd say less than 5% maybe?
I think, I think that's probably accurate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Knoll. First of all, thank you for writing the width on the cul-de-sac lots as part of that. I saw that. That was, that was nice. Quick question on the minimum finished floor area above grade, and I looked at LDR-2, and it looks like it's the same one. Is 720 the standard that we're using as above-grade finished?
Commissioner, no, that's correct, yes. And it's very rare that we get homes that are that small, but it is our minimum.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Roniak.
Is there a height requirement for residential homes?
Commissioner Roniak, the height limit for residential homes, and I don't have it memorized off the top of my head.
Is there?
There is one, yes. It's
If you wanted to build over the garage?
Correct.
The height would not restrict that?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, yes. That's, that's correct.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kate Schmokey.
In Plan Case 24-9, I recommend
We need a public hearing.
Oh, I apologize. There I go.
Any other questions from Mr. Platsner? Thank you. All right, we need a public hearing in this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing in Plan Case 25-9, an ordinance amendment to create an LDR-3 district, city code sections 11-601 and 11-607. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Seeing none, we close the public hearing. Limit comments to commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
In Plan Case 24-9, I'll recommend approval of an ordinance amending city code section 11-601 and creating city code 11-607 for the LDR-3 low-density residential zoning district.
I'll second it.
Motion by Schmokey, second by Knoblauch. Any further discussion? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And had motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission. It will be introduced by the City Council at their September 2 meeting, and a decision by the City Council at their September 16 meeting. Mr. Platsner, other business?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners. I did forget to add these to my slideshow. I apologize, but I do just want to go over really quickly what we will be bringing forward at the September Planning Commission meeting. So as I did mention during the last item, we will, staff are proposing a request to rezone and re-guide the Fire Station 3 property to low-density residential and LDR-3, under the assumption that City Council approves the LDR-3 zoning district. So that's planned to go forward in September, and we also have two requests for, one is for a conditional use permit, and one is for use flexibility. So the conditional use permit request is for former Alloy Brewing, which they are requesting to be allowed to do major auto repair for the purpose of doing transmission repair at that building. So that, they would be requesting to bring that back into the fold of the RPG Auto Mall. That is a conditional use permit requirement, so the Planning Commission and City Council would have some discretion over whether or not to allow that based on conditions on site. And then, there would be a request for use flexibility for the Holly Street Industrial Building. There's a tenant that is hoping to move into that building that is a volleyball training facility, so it's youth and adult men's volleyball, and they would be proposing to use the entire building as a training facility with volleyball courts, things like that. Not really a spectator facility, not an events facility, but mostly just training. And because indoor recreation is not a permitted use in the Port Evergreen zoning district, that would require use flexibility. So those are the items coming forward in September, and I think that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Which building was that? Did you say?
That's, it's Holly Street Industrial was approved last summer, and they're working on the shell of the building right now. It's right next to IDC Spring on Holly Street near Springbrook.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, anyone have anything for other business? Hearing, done?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Schmokey, second by Knoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please adjourn.